I'd like to call the October Williamson County Commission meeting to order. The first order of business we have is invocation by Commissioner Tommy Little and the pledge by Commissioner Burt Chalifin. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, thank you for letting us be able to be here together tonight to deliberate. We want to ask your blessings on one of our own who's had surgery recently, that you may restore her to her health, direct the doctors that guide her. We also want to ask your blessings on our public service and our armed services to keep them safe and to bring them back home. And our Father, we seek your help in our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence. So help us do the best to represent those who have elected us. We seek to represent fairly. Guide our efforts with your divine wisdom that we may reach the proper decisions for our community. Thank you again for all your many wonderful blessings of our life. In that name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call. If you're here, press your present button and confirm. Would you repeat that, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I have 21 present, three absent. Commissioner Hawkins absent, Commissioner Steve Smith, Commissioner Cheryl Wilson.
Yep, I've heard from Commissioner Smith, who's got something going around, and Commissioner Wilson has had surgery, so.
Arlene needs to confirm.
Ms. Arlene needs to confirm.
She's working.
Okay. Thank you.
She's here.
I want to do one.
Thank you.
We don't need that kind of night.
Moving right along. Next item is approval minutes that was mailed in your commission packet from the county, September 10th, 2012 county commission meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Hayes, Commissioner Little II, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're approved as submitted. Introduction and acceptance of highway commission minutes that were also included in your packet. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Langston, Commissioner Cook II.
If you're in favor, as they were submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they are submitted. Next, we have citizen communication. We have one person, and that's Ms. Debbie Henry. If you would come up and state your name and your address, your home address, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm Debbie Henry. Home address is 816 Shenandoah Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee. But I'm here on behalf of the TMA group. And as you all know, we operate and manage for Williamson County the commuter van pool program. Twice a year, we come before you with the semi-annual van pool recovery amount. So I want to pay you guys back. I want to give you some money tonight. Mayor Anderson, would you please come up? So Mayor Anderson, Chairman Walton, and Commissioners, we want to present back to you a check for $57,504 and 48 cents. This represents a period from January through June of 2012. It represents 261, 384 commuter miles that were traveled with this van pool program that serves not only the citizens, but the employees and employers of Williamson County. Approximately 300 participants are from Williamson County that participate in the total program. There are 26 vans dedicated solely to Williamson County out of 94 vans that serve the region. So there you go. Thank you for support of the program and all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have communications and messages. I'd like to thank Deputy John Byram and Ron Hooper for being here. Security, they're in the back, along with Sheriff Long. Thank y'all for being here. A message that I have with next month, the county commission meeting, I think Veterans' Day, which is November the 11th, falls, I believe, on Sunday. And so therefore, Monday is a holiday, which would be the 12th. So we will meet on November the 13th, which is a Tuesday. So just mark that in your calendars. We're moving on there. Also, we have in tonight's agenda, we have three late filed resolutions that are on your agenda. And it's Resolution 101217. And if there's no objections to hearing that, we'll hear that in. And it is on your agenda. I see none, so we will hear that. Also, Resolution 101218, likewise, don't see any objections to that. And Resolution 101219. So they are in order on your agenda, and we will hear those unless there's two objections, and I see none. So moving right along. Next, I'll turn it over to Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. From time to time, we get the opportunity to introduce and make special recognition to those people in our community that have served us and served the citizens extremely well. And tonight is one of those ladies that I would ask Mrs. Smith, Ingram Smith, to step up with, up to the microphone here as I have the opportunity to read a proclamation. And your supporters too, if you'd like, Ms. Smith. In your folder tonight that was mailed to you is the proclamation. If you'll follow along with me as we read. Whereas Ingram Smith is a native of Dresden, Germany, where she resided with her parents until 1938, when life became unbearable for people of the Jewish faith, and she immigrated to the United States. She is a graduate of New York City's Washington Irving High School, where she mastered the English language and began her quest to become an American citizen. And whereas she met an American G.I. from West Tennessee via correspondence during World War II, married him and moved to Franklin in 1946. And whereas Mrs. Smith embraced Franklin, the Williamson County community through the teaching of its children, and she established the Smith Kindergarten in 1952 at the First Presbyterian Church of Franklin, today called the Historical Franklin Presbyterian Church. And whereas Mrs. Smith has offered a safe and dynamic learning environment for young children continuously for the past 60 years, and under her leadership, countless numbers of Williamson County children have grown developmentally and educationally during the critical years of early childhood at Smith Kindergarten and today at Smith Preschool. And whereas Mrs. Smith's educational achievements at Peabody College, today part of Vanderbilt University, have garnered her respect and acclaim in her profession, it is on August the 20th, 2012, Mrs. Smith celebrated 60th class of young children to be students at the Smith Preschool at 410 Battle Avenue here in Franklin. It's by this seal and my signature that we call, we thank her for her great service and thank her for her many contributions to our community. Mrs. Smith, thank you.
I can't believe this. It was really a big surprise. And I know some of you have come to Smith Preschool, and if you didn't, maybe your children or grandchildren did. This year, as in last couple of years, we've gotten to the point where grandparents of the children we have have come to Smith Preschool. And, you know, I was talking today when my husband told me we were going to move to Franklin, Tennessee. I was living in New York. I'd grown up in New York, really. And I said, "Where's that?" And my friends had a fit. "You don't want to move there. You know, it's in a tiny little town. You'd be miserable." And so I told my father, I said, "I know Paul told you that we're moving, but I hope he has a good time because I'm not going." And he looked at me and he said, "I want to tell you something, young lady. You turned this family upside down to marry this guy. I don't care where you go, you're going with him." So anyhow, it is the very, very best thing that ever happened in my whole entire life. This community took me to their heart. They raised me, believe me. I was so green. And they have loved me and they have shared their children with me the very best that any community could possibly do. But I would be really amiss if I did not say, "Where is she? Come on. She has been my right arm. She's been my support. Claudia has been, she's been Smith Preschool for the years when I got to the point I couldn't do it for eight hours a day anymore. So I thank you very, very much. And I thank all of you for loving me, for raising me, and for sharing your children with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I did. Now, reports of county offices, County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, as I'm asking our Public Health Director to go out of order a little bit and ask Becky Bromley to come up and give us a up-to-date on the steroid injection infection that is going across our nation, and particularly here in the middle Tennessee area. On your desk, you should have provided, been provided, a media release that was put out today from the Public Health Department in Nashville. And in view of the fact that this is, we've had a couple of people in our own community to pass away, and I thought it was most important that we get the information to you so that the information could get out over our television and our radio. Becky Bromley, Becky.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson and Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. As you can see, the Tennessee Department of Health is working very closely with CDC on this outbreak of meningitis and deep brain stroke. They were the first to identify it in Tennessee and alert the CDC about this condition. We have three clinics in Tennessee that had received the contaminated steroid injections and stopped using them immediately upon a notification. The New England Compounding Center in Framingham, Massachusetts is the compounding center where the injections were put together. The three clinics, of course, the one in Nashville, there's also Crossville and Oak Ridge. As of today, there were 25 cases in Tennessee and four deaths. We do extend our sympathy to those around the families and the friends of those who've been affected. There is no ongoing exposure, but there is ongoing risk. We don't know exactly when the risk will end or how many people will be identified. The department opened a, what we call our SHOC, which is our State Health Operations Center in Nashville on Friday, and then the regions where there were affected clinics opened theirs today. They have worked continuously 24/7 since this began to try and identify all the individuals who might have been exposed. Those people are being identified by phone calls, by home visits, any way we can to make sure that they, if they had a potential risk of exposure, that they know what the signs and symptoms are, and that they get treatment immediately. You know, if we identify those symptoms early on, then the treatment is more successful. We're considering this as a public health emergency, and all the compounds that were issued by this center have been recalled. Tennessee did send out an alert two days earlier to all the practitioners in Tennessee that might have received them for anything that was manufactured at this facility. Of course, you know, our focus is on protecting the citizens and trying to make sure that everyone gets care as soon as possible. I'll entertain questions. I can't promise I can answer them. I'm not a medical provider.
Any questions for Ms. Bromley? Commissioner Hayes?
Becky, if you will, would you go over the symptoms that we should be on the lookout for?
They should be. If someone had that injection, a fever, headaches, stiff neck, anything out of the ordinary needs to be considered, and they need to check with their healthcare providers.
Any further questions? I see none. Thank you, Becky, for the update.
Mr. Chairman, we'll go into our reports now. Nina Graham would come up and give us the financial condition of our county. Also, I think Ernie Williams, our Chairman of the Budget Committee, has got a request too at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. We have several reports tonight. On your desk this evening, you'll find the report from the Cool Springs Conference Center. For the month of August, we received $48,600 from the conference center. You'll also find your privileged tax report for the month of August. We're still showing a positive trend in our privileged tax collections, and that's the strongest August in four years. And then in your packet, you had your budget report for the month of August. We're tracking in line for this time of year. Also in your packet this month, you had a report from the State of Tennessee Comptroller of Treasury's Office of State and Local Finance. Anytime that you have a refunding for bond issues now, we have to submit a refunding plan for the refunding bonds. So you have a copy of the letter from the state where we submitted those plans and their analysis on those. The two resolutions this evening.
Back up here to the podium. The resolutions, 101215 and 101216. And if you would briefly just tell the purpose of those bonds, I know that was in the packet there, but if you would tell the purpose of the bond, and specifically the savings to the county that's expected through these bonds.
Okay. And those letters go along with those resolutions. The first one, 101215 is for the Rural Debt Service Fund, and 101216 was for the General Debt Service Fund. Both of the refunding issues were mainly to have a debt service savings through lower interest rates. The refunding plan submitted to the state estimated a savings of approximately $3 million for the general fund bonds and 1.4 million for the county district bonds. It's important to understand these savings were based on the market at the time that these projections were made. So up to the time of the sale, we'll just watch the market and have to go with the rates as they are at that time. But these are projected savings. In selecting the bonds to refund, we will target savings of 3%, but it will be no less than 2%. The method of sale will be through competitive bid. The terms are not extended. And if the savings are less than 3%, we can postpone the sale up to the time of the bids, and we can reject the bids even at that time if we don't reach those savings. That's all I have. If you have any questions?
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, Nina, I've got a question on this. I've a little bit been out of the financial market for a while. But it looks, based on these state letters, on the 15, it's going to cost us $1,006,000 to save $1,004,000. And on the general debt fund, it's going to cost us $4.4 million to save $3 million. And to equate that to a house closing, my closing costs are going to be $1.6 million for the rural, and I'm only going to save $1,500,000 over the time of the loan. So why do it?
If you don't mind, Sam Cruz is here with Stevens, and he's our financial advisor. And we also have Jeff Oldham, who is our bond counsel. If you don't mind, I'll let him answer that.
Because to me, it doesn't make sense because we're not saving money, where it's costing us money to do this deal.
I can answer that. The contribution is a, partly we're refunding the 2013 bonds as well, and you've already budgeted for 2013 debt service. So rather than borrow money to pay that debt service, you're simply transferring that amount from your debt service fund to your escrow. It's not a cost. You're just paying, you're using that money, which is in your debt service fund, to pay debt service on those bonds. If that, I mean, we could choose, for example, let me put it another way. We could choose not to refund, refinance the bonds that are coming due in March and April of 2013 and do away with that transfer. We could just leave those bonds outstanding, and then you would just pay them as due. It's a little bit cleaner to refinance the entire issue. So all we're doing is having you transfer money you would have spent in March or April into the escrow, and then those payments will be made from the escrow.
Okay. So what is our net cost of this deal?
It's about, the cost of issuance is around $125,000 on the $40 million deal, and it's around $110,000 on the $30 million deal.
Okay. So the rest of this is already budgeted funds expenditure?
Yeah. Those are budgeted, that's simply to pay debt service that you had already budgeted for, and so we don't need to finance it from the bond issue. And on the costs, I'll also say, the underwriters can build a cost into their bid for them. We don't know what that will be. It's just part of the bid process, but that's an additional cost.
Okay. So these totals of what we're going to borrow are net of these numbers, these dollars we're paying off?
Right. The savings in the, that you've read, the $1,004,000, those are net of everything, net of all costs.
I mean, no, I'm talking about the bonds were showing up on the top of this letter from the state shows how much we're refund, or how much we're calling back in, like $41 million on the general debt. Does that include this, well, what would it be, about $4 million of this current debt payment?
No. Well, if you didn't make the debt service fund transfer, we'd be coming with a resolution for $44,000 or $45,000 instead of $40,000 or $41,000.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Nina or Mr. Cruz? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that completes my report. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? I see none. Thank you, sir. Next, we're here from Dr. Mike Looney, Director of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Things are progressing very nicely in the school district. All systems are go. We are currently, our enrollment number is 33,297 students. That includes our preschool students. If you exclude the preschool students, our enrollment would be 32,802 students. That's an 808 student increase from the beginning of the 2011, 2012 school year, slightly below our projections at this point in time. We have a number of resolutions, three specifically before you tonight. The most notable one is our request to close on the entire 100 acres in the Nolanville area at one time. We have a closing planned on the 75 acres, and we were trying to save some taxpayer dollars by having one closing, one survey, and given that we wanted to use a little bit of the property, the 25 acres for the high school property, we thought it would be in the best interest of taxpayers in Williamson County. Be glad to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes, ma'am.
I got two questions for you. When will you have the enrollment numbers up on your website?
They actually got finalized numbers today. They were up briefly. There was an error in them, so I took them back down. We'll have them up tomorrow.
Okay. And then, when do you expect you might bring the intent to fund that new high school to us?
The board will be dealing with that at its next regular meeting, and so I suspect that the county commission will receive it in November. As I understand the county commission's schedule, I believe the Education Committee would receive it in late October.
Follow-up? Commissioner Danner?
Okay. Commissioner Ryan? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, I know a couple of weeks ago in the Education Committee meeting, it was, we were informed that the school fund balance will remain strong after these two resolutions. I just wanted reconfirmation of that before we actually voted on that tonight.
Yes, sir. If all three of the resolutions are passed as requested, our fund balance will be $7,379,347.95.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any further questions for Dr. Looney? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other county offices or committees need to report at this time? I see none. Moving on. I'd like to deviate a little bit from the agenda, and I see somebody in the audience I'd like to call on. He doesn't know I'm going to mention this, but if Jerry Sharber would come up and introduce himself. Everybody knows Jerry, but Jerry's the new interim chamber president of the joint Williamson County Chamber. And I'm sure Jerry goofed that up, but I know you've never been short of words, so I don't. I don't, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but...
That's the reason I was late getting here, to sign up, Chairman.
Well, welcome.
I was talking over to Vanderbilt place.
Welcome. I, I just wanted you to say hello, and for the people out in the world that, that don't know you, and we're excited about the new chamber, so if you had anything to add to that, that'd be great.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Walton. Commissioners, I made the comment a couple, about a week or so ago that, and I made this to the combined staff of the former Brentwood Chamber of Commerce, the former Cool Springs Chamber of Commerce, and the former Williamson County Franklin Chamber of Commerce. I made the comment that I want us to look at this, this merge and move opportunity, which will happen, as like we're getting prepared to go on a nice cruise. And you need to make sure you have everything in your luggage and any other items that you need to take, to include money, for us to get on the ship and take a nice cruise to our new location, which we do not know where that sits yet. In fact, I spent all afternoon looking at different locations. But I also said last week, I felt like I was on a bullet train trying to get to the dock in time to get things going. So we are moving really fast, really rapid. We are, hopefully, we'll have our first payroll Monday, and it will be on time, and it will be all electronic, which is something new we're doing. So, you know, we're making progress, and it's exciting times for the chamber. We look at it from a standpoint of trying to merge right now, and we're looking at the timeframes of October and November as times in which we're trying to bring everyone together, and you'll see some celebrations about that. Legally, we are one entity now. There's one chamber of commerce, and it's the Williamson County Chamber of Commerce. And if there's anything the chamber can ever do for this commission, which I know we'd be more, more than happy to do, if there's anything we can do from a standpoint of representing business to the betterment of this county, we'd be more than happy to do that, too. So thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner, Chairman, and excited to be here.
Thank you, and we're excited for you. Thank you. All right. Moving on, next is elections and appointments. The first one, Economic Development Council, four years, four-year terms expiring October of 2016, terms expiring Betsy Crosley, nomination Betsy Crosley, term expiring Robert Ring, nomination Robert Ring, and term expiring Gail Moore Your Harris, nomination Gail Moore Your Harris. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Bain, Mr. Hancock II. Any other nominations from the floor? I see none. If you're in favor of these nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they are confirmed. Next election, Municipal Solid Waste Board, four-year term expiring October 2016, term expiring Steve Worley, nomination Steve Worley, term expiring Ricky Jones, nomination Ricky Jones.
Commissioner Probst, sir.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, Commissioner Hancock II. All in favor, or any other nominations from the floor? I see none. All in favor of those nominations, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And they are confirmed. Next for the Municipal Solid Waste Board, we have a six-year term expiring October of 2018, term expiring Tom Murdock, nomination Tom Murdock. Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Hancock. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Tom Murdock, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And he is confirmed. Next is consent agenda, and all we have on the consent agenda is notaries. So I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Commissioner Little and Commissioner Hester, is that on the board?
Yes.
All right. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. All right. There's no unfinished business. The next item on the agenda is zoning. It's a public hearing regarding Resolution 10, 12, 4, resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the revised Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012. Okay. So I, I will now open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak, if they'll come forward, give their name, their home address, and we ask that you be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. So anyone like to speak, please come to the podium.
Is this on the hamlets?
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Rob Schaefer. I live at 1804 Pope's Chapel Road, about a quarter of a mile from downtown Burwood, which as you know is Huff Store. If you wanna know what's going on, that's the place to be. I grew up in Middle Tennessee. In 1956, my parents moved to Missouri. Unfortunately, I had to go with them. It was a sad day. It was a sad day for our family. My business career has taken me to St. Louis twice, Springfield, Illinois, New York, Dallas, Baltimore, Providence, Rhode Island, and then with the grace of God, we got back here in 1994. We worked really hard to have this opportunity. While my office was in downtown Nashville, we knew before we got here that we were gonna live in Williamson County. And after being in Franklin for about a year, we were lucky enough to find some property across the street from Judy Hayes, and we moved to Burwood in 1995. It's a wonderful place. I'm sure everyone here has been to Burwood, Tennessee. Where else can you be picking up the trash that people grace us with? We've got a little bit of road frudge, and have three people stop and ask you if everything was okay, if you needed any help. I have, I have an advantage over, I think, a lot of the people in here, an advantage I really wish I didn't have. I've lived all over the country. We were so excited, as I said, to get back here. The advantage that I have is, I don't think, if you've, if you haven't lived here your whole life, you don't know what a special place this is. It can kinda get, you can kinda take it for granted. I don't ever want it, I'd never take for granted getting to live in Middle Tennessee and especially in Southern Williamson County. I don't have the exact verbiage from the planning commission, but the, the goal was, with these hamlets, was to maintain the agricultural, integrity's not the right word, but the rural feel of Williamson County. And while we weren't pleased with the building, size that was decided upon, we'd be even less pleased if they, if the buildings were made bigger. So I'd just ask you to, I know, I know Mike put a lot of work into the, into that project. If, we would really appreciate it if, if you would not let the size of those buildings get any bigger than they are today, or they're proposed to be. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Anyone else?
My name is Anna Schaefer. We're bookends. I live at the same place he does, 1804 Pope's Chapel Road. And I just want to repeat what he said. We would like for these buildings to stay, stay small, not get any bigger. And I pray for that all the time. And I would ask you, please don't pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Anyone else?
My name is David Taylor, and my address is 6293 Meeks Road, and I have 25 acres of CC property or hamlet property. And I'm here to, I guess, speak in opposition to the recommendations that were made by the planning commission to keep these sized reduced. Unfortunately, they did pave it over with a parking lot. 840 is running through here, and it's come to a point where I think the, the commission needs to look forward and see what, you know, what things are gonna happen in the future and how we should prepare for this growth. Although I'm not happy with what the recommendations were, I'm at least happy that the county commission has listened to the other landowners, have actually put thought into it, held meetings, and listened to what the people say. Unfortunately, I don't think they've listened to everybody with the people that owns this property. To me, this debate has really come down to three things. I believe it's come down to property rights, needs for services, and economic growth. Excuse me. Property rights, when I bought my property five years ago, I bought it, and, and when I did, I bought a zoning ordinance book. I looked at what I was gonna be able to do with that property. I based my decisions for purchasing that property and investing a considerable amount of money into this county with the hopes to be able to develop that in the future. Well, at this point, those rights are being stripped away from me and, and which I believe is gonna devalue my land. It's a little upsetting to me that I have to have to actually stand here and ask for rights back that are being taken away from me. I'm not asking for more rights than I had before, I'm asking for the same exact rights that I had when I bought the property. Need for services, many of you know I'm out on Arno Road, but out on Arno Road, you've got, excuse me, three developments that are probably gonna put in excess of 1,200 homes to that area. Who's gonna service that? You know, who, who, where are they gonna get services for groceries, for, for other services? You have other areas of this county, such as McKay's Mills, where, you know, they have a grocery store that services that area, and they're much closer to Franklin and Cool Springs than we are. We're 10, you know, 10 miles out. The other thing would be economic growth. This last weekend, there was an article in the Daily News Journal about the neighboring counties, about Rutherford County. And, and they had some great statistics to say that, you know, the 840 is passing through, and the article is about the road ahead and what a game changer is gonna be. And it seems to me that instead of looking forward and saying, how can we have potential economic growth in our area and our county, it seems like we're doing the exact opposite. We're trying to push the development to the neighboring county. We're pushing tax dollars, we're pushing tax base to somewhere else. Tax dollars is what pays to run this county. So I, I think that what I'd like to ask is that the county consider removing the restrictions and leaving it exactly the way it was before, and let it be driven by the development that's in there, in that area, as which most people know, it's, it's gonna be driven by infrastructure. If there isn't the infrastructure out there, it doesn't matter if it's a 5,000 square foot building or a 50,000 square foot building. If they don't have the, the, the infrastructure, it's not gonna be built. So if you would take that into consideration, I greatly appreciate it. And I'd also like to thank the county commission and the planning department for all the hard work that they've done to get to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Wayne Jones. I live at 6407 Patensville-Arno Road, Bethesda community, and after 35 years. Got butterflies, I'm not used to talking to people, so I'll just try to say what I can. 840 did come through, and everybody thought that was going to be a good thing. Told us about how it was gonna alleviate traffic around Nashville and spur the economic development in the southern part of the counties around Nashville. Everybody was happy, everybody wanted it to happen, and it happened. They told the people that, whose land was going to be taken, that they'd be compensated fairly for it. They told the people who wasn't going to have their property taken but lived right up next to it that they could expect economic development, and their property would raise in value that way. Everybody was supposed to be happy. 6407 Patensville-Arno Road, where I live, is about 150 feet off the eastbound exit ramp of 840. When it came through, the road dissected Patensville. On my side of the interstate is a church, the fire department, roofing company, another company that used to be Ford, now Ford Arnold Concrete, their trucks still come up there. The other side is another church, is Glenn's Grocery, which is now owned by somebody else, a mechanic shop, and some other business, I'm not sure what it is. But 840 just came right down the middle of the valley, and what we have is a split community. A split community that when you go out your front door, you hear trucks, cars, motorcycles, and more trucks. We had our house appraised here about a year or so ago to get another loan, to pay off some other loans, and what did the guy comment on? Boy, it sure is noisy up here. And I think he took that into consideration. When we have company come out, relatives, everything else come out and visit to us, they don't stay outside very long, 'cause that's all you hear is traffic. If you've traveled 840, you know how busy it can be. If you hadn't, you probably will sooner or later as they are about to finish, finish it. I, over the years, in my 35 years, have looked at that piece of property and raised my children, and always thought about maybe having a business or developing that corner. I've had, at different times, different plans drawn up by friends that are in the business. All the plans I have drawn up are a larger building than what this current zoning would allow me to have. When I look at developing a piece of property out in an area like that, I'm not going to be Leapers Fork, where you have the quaint little shops and restaurants and stuff like that. Patensville's not that kind of an area. I might not be the Burwood that these people talk about. And again, a nice area. What I'm trying to let you know is the different areas, the different hamlets that we have out here are all unique in its, in their own characteristics. And to sit here and try to put a cookie cutter kind of size of building on it is killing the rest of us. I don't know what to say. I can't sell my house residential. Nobody wants it. The Praiser kind just looked at me, and I know he took that into consideration. Who am I gonna sell it to? Either I will develop that property myself, or I'm gonna be looking for someone else to develop it. If they can only put this on there, they're probably gonna walk away. And I know that's, you know, it isn't your concern as to what my situation is, but we were promised different rules when it did happen. The people who devised the crossroads center took all these things into consideration. They told us that your property could be this, 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 or this, and we'd have to look at it. You'd come to us with a plan, we'd look at the sewer, we'd look at the water, we'd look at your acreage, we'd look at the different restrictions, and we'd make a decision. A decision that would be good for me, a decision that'd be good for you, a decision that'd be good for the community. We all agreed that that was a good plan. And like this last gentleman says, now that's starting to get stripped away from us. And I, and I don't mind if you wanna call us a hamlet. I think it's kind of a nice name. But I'm not so sure that I think the size restrictions of the building goes with what's really happening. We are a diverse community, and Leapers Fork is different than Burwood, which is different than Rutterville, which is different than Patensville, but the areas that are impacted by 840 have a whole different set of circumstances than the ones that may be a couple miles away. I would, I would love to have the country back, and I imagine if you talk to any one of my neighbors that's more than a mile away from that, that don't hear all this, they'd like to keep it that way. I'm talking for those of us that are right in the shadow, the ones that are right on the edge of the interstate exits, the ones that can't sell our house residential, and wondering, what can we do? We need your help.
30 seconds, Mr. Jones.
I'll, I'll finish right there. Again, I thank you for giving me the time. I still got butterflies in my stomach. I hope I had, was able to clearly at least state my position. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Jones. I live at 6407 Patensville-Arno Road, College Grove, Tennessee. I would just like to reiterate what my husband said, and let you know that we have been going through this a long time. We have been going to many, many meetings. This right here is the first public hearing in 1991 that we went to, and that's when we were designated crossroad centers. We would very much have liked to state crossroad centers. Somehow or another, that has been changed, and we're now looking at either, I'm not even quite sure if we're gonna be a hamlet or a hamlet MG. quite sure if we're going to be a hamlet or a hamlet MGA or a village maybe. And that's where the confusion comes in. And I'm not really sure what you're voting on tonight. Are you voting to keep us a hamlet? Are you voting to keep us at the 5,000 limit? Are you going to maybe consider other things? It's been rather a confusing process for us all. If you're going to be voting tonight on whether or not you're going to adopt the hamlet and do away with the crossroads centers, then, then we're already past that. If you're voting tonight whether or not to amend the hamlet revision so that we don't have just a 5,000 square foot limit and we can be, have bigger limits on our square footage depending on our, our property size, then I would like to say, please don't go back and, and make us only have a 5,000 square foot building. It's not fair to us who live right next to the interstate and it's not fair, like my husband said, to categorize every single property the same. So, I thank you for your time and your ear and listening to us and God be with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Paul Grammer. We live at 4819 Highway 96 East, Arrington, Tennessee. And been listening to them tonight with the CC2 Crossroads Center. Arrington, when I moved out there 14 years ago, it was rural. It was real quiet. It was a great place. And we moved to eight forty, which is a little less than two miles from where we're at. And you come off the eight forty and you come right across 96, shortcut over I-65 and Cool Springs. Sleeping at night gets pretty hard. Trucks, cars, takes us 10, 15 minutes sometimes to get out of our driveways. It backs up from about up the road to Triune, all the way down to King's Chapel, where Mr. Paul has his subdivision. So, we're not rural anymore. We're metropolitan out there, a lot of traffic, a lot of people. And within our area out there, I think we have the largest population within an eight mile area, according to what I've read in some of the newspapers. So, we have 46 acres out there. I'm hoping that you allow for a larger building space out there. Once you doesn't fit all, Leapers Fork's a nice place, but it's rural. But Arrington, Tennessee is not rural anymore. And people out there that come to our farm, we have Peachtree Farms, we have over 300 students in summer camp out there. My wife's been out there for 25 years, knows a lot of you, nice folks on the council here and the commissioners. We would like to see it, where we can have larger space. 15,000 square feet's not enough. We've had a lot of people come by wanting to put warehouses out there, wanting to put storage spaces out there. We've turned them down because we want something nice for our community too. Now, public came out there before the recession hit. They wanted to build, builders in Brentwood, some nice folks. They wanted to build a really first-class shopping center out there with a nice public store, with shops, nice restaurants. Most of the people that come to our farm within a seven, eight mile radius, they want the same thing. They want a place where they can go without having to drive an all the way to Franklin, all the way to Murfreesboro, or all the ways over on the far end of Millers. So, we're hoping and praying that you commissioners, would you do a good job and we're happy with all of you. We're happy with the planning commission. With the CC like it was, if we put something out there, it has to come before the planning commission. And I'm around this county and look around a lot and they've done a good job. But the growth's coming. It's not going to be stopped. And we need some nice classy places out there. So, I'm hoping that, praying that y'all will, knowing once you doesn't fit all, we'll raise the size. So, we can have something nice out there. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Greg Langley. I live at 915 Battlefield Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. I appreciate all the efforts the planning commission and you all have put into working on this. And as I understand it, what we're looking at, or what you are looking at tonight, is a modification recommended by the planning commission to the county commission, which essentially allows for a 10,000 square foot building as opposed to a 5,000 and possibly 15,000 if there's 10 acres or something like that. One of the things I'd like to be assured is of, is that there's no floor area ratio that would compromise that somewhere else in the ordinance. The other thing is, well, the 10,000 square feet is a step in the right direction. I, like most of the folks, think that things should be left like they are. And, you know, I understand, you know, some of the concerns of some other people that live in the area whose property is not being downzoned essentially, which is what I view this as being. But part of this whole thing that I'm confused about and have expressed on more than one occasion is, you know, the motivation. Now, granted, I haven't made all of the meetings and the committee meetings and whatnot, but there was an ordinance in place from 1988 until, well theoretically, when this goes into effect, the first of the year, that either limited the size, the scope to 29,000 square feet, or as I understand it, a few years ago, that was removed for whatever reason that I'm not aware of. What I don't know is of which, which big building showed up in a CC district that made us afraid of that? You know, I, I, you know? The other thing is this vision of a hamlet, you know? Again, I hadn't made all these meetings, but what is that? When I've tried to get that in my mind, I don't know what that is. And I don't think it's been well communicated at any of the meetings that I have what that vision of a hamlet is. To me, it is, you know, taking property rights. And to me, that seems contrary to the philosophy of what I understand the local politics to be. It doesn't make sense to me. The other thing, the change that the planning commission proposed, you know, it's sort of, I don't want to call it a false choice, but it kind of is a false choice. You know, 15,000 square feet on 10 acres, you know, you kind of maybe ought to say, well, it's 15,000 square feet on five acres that a meteorite's fallen on because nobody's going to go out and buy an extra eight acres to make that 5,000 square foot different. It just isn't going to happen. I mean, and to insert something that's not going to happen seems sort of nonsensical to me. And it's kind of a false choice. But regardless of that, the other thing that I brought up on a couple occasions, I think, is that because of the topography and the way lots and different parcels sit in this county, it's pretty much impossible to come up with this one-size-fits-all. There are some parcels that you could put 10, 15, 20,000 square feet on and barely notice it. And another parcel, you put 5,000 square feet on, it might stand out like a sore thumb. So, this whole approach just doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me. Let's see, the, and just to add additional regulations, whatever, I just, I don't, it doesn't seem to make sense without this sort of, I don't want to call it a clear and present danger, but just where is it? Where was it? You know? And I know things change. I know the whole community and area is going to change because of eight forty. But the bottom line is, is a lot of people made decisions for investments based on the regulations that were in place at the time that they bought. People that bought or moved out to Burwood after 1988, or quite frankly, even before that, because eight forty was scheduled or at least discussed long before that, had a reasonable expectation that these things were going to come down the road. So, at some point to say, hey, well, you know, I feel better about my neighbors' properties being downzoned, well, that doesn't sit quite right with me. But regardless, those are my concerns. I think, again, I've mentioned them a couple times. I appreciate your time and listening and hopefully you will kind of just leave it like it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Robin Miller. I live at five, 5470 Carter's Creek Pike in the Burwood community. I appreciate all of the meetings and the help that y'all have given towards this amendment. But I am, like the several gentlemen before me, I am opposed to the changes. My husband, my husband Beau Miller has, is a fourth-generation Williamsonite. He bases his entire lifestyle on raising cattle. We have over 100 head of cattle in Williamson County, spread all across it. We currently live on five acres in the Burwood community. We have a thousand-feet marker in our yard. That's how close we are to eight forty. So, when my husband bought this property in 2005, it was because it was an investment property. We were planning on taking that investment, turning it into something down the road. Do we have immediate plans? No, we're very happy where we live. We enjoy the community and obviously, we like the agricultural lifestyle. That's what, I'm a nurse. My bachelor's is animal science from Texas A&amp;M University. So, we both enjoy living in the country. We both enjoy agriculture and that lifestyle. But 1,000 feet from eight forty also requires a different thought process. And that thought process is that you will eventually sell that property as an investment and be able to purchase more land, more cows later on. I just, I just hope that you take that into consideration because we're in the very heart of Burwood and I actually drive by the Shaper's property on my way to work. So, it's a very beautiful area. Williamson County is absolutely gorgeous and we know that the zoning and planning commission would not allow to have a property or, or a business to be put in place that would not reflect the, the general public's perception of what Williamson County is. You look at Williamson County, you look at the businesses that are currently there, and you know that because of all of your hard work in planning, that those, those decisions would be allowed to where we would be able to use our investment, to be able to, to use our planning ability to, to better ourselves. And so, we're asking that you just not take away our rights as property owners and that you take that into consideration because we're, we are the ones that are suffering from this decision. And I don't know if any of y'all have property in a community, you know, in a hamlet area or anything like that, but if your property was, was being limited on its options, I would think that you would also be opposed to those changes and have a real problem with those changes. So, I thank you for your time and I appreciate all of your help and I hope that you would just keep our, our restrictions the way that they currently are and we would hope that you wouldn't change anything for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Got in right under the wire.
My name is David Giles. I live at 68, 68 Bethesda Arnold Road. We have 170 acres, 75 acres, somewhere thereabout, on, joining Mr. Richard King's family. Across the road, we have 200 acres, Bethesda Arnold Road, which goes to Bethesda Road, which goes all the way around to Cross Keys Road. All of it road footage. It's been in our family, my wife's family, for about five generations, six, something like that. Been a long time. And we would like to see things kept as they are today and not change it because of what the last two couple people spoke, said. And we would like the same opportunity to sell like they did at the Cool Springs Mall area. Those were dairy farms at one time and they sold and they made pretty good money on it. We'd like to have the same opportunity. We don't want to be restricted. We'd like to leave things as they are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. We'll close the public hearing. All right, moving on to Resolution 10124. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the revised Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012. Commissioner Brockman? Mr. Hayes II. Planning Commission, 1040, against. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you. Chairman Walton, we have been meeting based on the input that we had at the commission meeting when we approved our new ordinance. Of course, there, there were many hours put into it originally, but because we heard concerns from a few of the communities that are deemed hamlets, we thought we needed to go back and, and, and change, make some changes. To do that, we held meetings, we got input from the communities that were being impacted. And at the end of the day, we saw that we, if we looked at the, the square footage based on the acreage, that that would be a more logical way to approach what we considered, these rural little communities that were, that had been established historically and had within them a commercial node. So, we're not talking about residential, this is just the commercial institutional designations. And we came up with the less, one acre or less, 5,000 square feet above that to, up to 10 acres, um, excuse me, up to, yeah, 10 acres, that would be 10,000 square feet. And then beyond that, 15, there's 15,000 square feet for the building. I think it's important to remember that one thing that came out so clearly from all of the residents in the, most of the residents in the community, is that when you ask them what did they want to see in their small commercial nodes? Now, not all the land around like Burwood or Bending Chestnut is in this, what used to be called these community crossroads, just where you're allowed to have commercial and industrial. What people said is that square footage was a little bit difficult to get their arms around, but they did say what they wanted was mom and pop grocery store, small retail, small restaurants, the things that could add to their community but still allow the rural character to remain. And so, because of that reason, it just seemed like if we allowed large, extremely large commercial buildings, that those were really more appropriate for the areas that were in the cities that are within our county. And if the area grew to the point where it needed to be a village, then it could get that designation, which would allow more and, and larger commercial structures. So, for that reason, we looked at these zoning standards, you know, not as really restrictive, but they really, that, you know, we have quality of life second to none. And I think our property values are second to none because of our standards, because of our zoning. The, the, the point that kept, keeps being brought up is this 29, 29,000 square feet. It's not allowed now. So, our maximum now is this 15,000 and it seems appropriate based on what people really want in these communities. And it's, and it was a, it's a balance. Some people think that's way too much. Others think they want, you know, 30, 40,000 square feet. So, we sort of met in the middle. I always liked John Lackey, he says, when not everybody is, you know, you, you, you give to get. And so, what we, we think we've come up with is a compromise that so many people can live with and works and establishes what, you know, what the vision was for, for these hamlets. One other thing is that, you know, if you, if, if large, big commercial comes out, it's sort of like leapfrog development. In other words, when you're ready for the large Cool Springs, it, it, they're there now, that's there now because they were in the city, Brentwood and Franklin, they're on I-65. These little communities are different and people really treasure, treasure the character that they have. So, I really encourage you to support this. So, I really encourage you to support this and all of the standards for setbacks, et cetera, will be in place, but they've been in effect for everybody, you know, for the last 20 years. And again, I just want to reiterate, what Williamson County has done in our planning and zoning has allowed us to be this incredibly special place. So I just, I, I hope you'll approve it and I think we've, we've come up with a good compromise.
Commissioner Hayes, did you want, is it co-sponsor?
Steve have the perception of what the square footage of something is. If we think of our houses, if we have a 3,500 square foot house, that's a pretty good sized house. In trying to step these things off, and stepping off Huff Store, if you're familiar with Huff Store, they're in the triangle of Burwood, looks pretty good size from that side. Do you know that store is not 5,000 square feet? It's somewhat less than that. So that's a pretty good sized store for, for that area. We tried very hard to listen to the public. And I really appreciate everybody who came tonight and has come to the other meetings because it shows you care. Back early on, maybe before any of you were particularly involved, we had other public meetings where we did listen to them too. They told us they wanted green space. We had a focus group with agricultural, the agricultural community. And I sort of see myself as a representative of the agricultural community because I live on a farm and I care a great deal about it. We worked hard to try to come to some understanding of what the fact of trying to change a front setback ratio would do to them. We listened. They also were concerned about some limitations that were being proposed about selling market products on their, their, in their areas and on their farms. They were concerned about some potential things that we would class in the modern days as agritourism because it was limiting that access. We listened and we went back and we changed and we voted for those things that were accommodating to that group. There's a farmer that I have a great deal of respect for, who I talked to at great lengths about this. He had some real concerns about just the limitation of the 5,000 square feet. And I think he was right when they said, maybe one size does not fit all. We went back and we looked again and we determined that everybody is not with the same square footage and the same acreage in the hamlets. We also saw that that could be changed and if it grew enough, it had the potential of being a village. A couple of places we've heard about tonight particularly have those possibilities. Patensville does have some, some incentives to maybe look toward that direction. And I would say to him, not everybody wanted 840. But some did and it has come and we're making our best. We do work for economic growth and we are trying to make life better for those who are wanting economic growth. Also, in the Arrington area, we know that years ago, I was told that some bigger box stores had looked at that area. But how many years have we wanted the Murfreesboro Road widened? I know of 20 that I've heard about it and it's not widened yet. And 840 coming close by, I'm doubting that it's going to be a priority for some time yet. The question of development has to lead into sewer, landslopes, soil, traffic congestions, all these other things, and the flooding potential. So no matter what square footage we say might be on a piece of property, it might not be possible anyway. We believe that with the, the selection that we have, or the choice we have of one to, one acre, one, zero to one acre, 5,000 square feet, would give a, a good possibility for those in the smaller areas. If you have up to 10 acres, then you can have 10,000, 10,000 square feet. If you have more than 10 acres, 15,000 square feet. That doesn't mean if you have a large number of acres, that you could only have a 15 square feet building. You may have several. And if it's growing enough, you can go back and solicit and request being a hamlet. I will say that since the last meeting where the people who were invited, were particularly the landowners, I've had more calls this time wanting it to stay 5,000 feet, or even suggesting it going smaller than I have before. Now, before then, yes, we had a lot of concern about it being more. But right now, the people who live there are wanting it to stay small. Let's remember, quality of life is brought on by residents and without the quality of life, we don't have the residents. Without the residents and the rooftops, we don't have a search for community, commercial growth. Rooftops bring commercial business. And so we have to get, not the cart before the horse, but put the horse back out front. There is a chance for us to develop in a village if it becomes necessary, but if it's not, let's keep the character that we have in these small hamlets. Let's work on the, making them attractive, making the green space be desirable, make people want to come here and then maybe they will want a mom and pop business, which is what the community wanted. We didn't have a single person in any group that I attended, and I only missed one meeting in the whole time, to say they wanted a big box. The others said absolutely no big boxes. And I think that that says a lot. And I would like to say that I feel like that this is a good compromise. The gentleman I had a great respect for came after the last meeting and he said, I think this is a good compromise. This is not something for every person to have one, one size. I also would like, would like to say that in our planning commission, we have an awesome group of people who care. But in that group, we have a great mix of people. We have developers, we have real estate people, we have farmers, we have land trust of farming, green enthusiasts, we have all kinds of people who represent the areas. And what is significant is they had heard this and each one of them voted unanimously to approve this compromise. We did listen, fellow commissioners. We listened and we thought 5,000 might not be the right answer. But we do believe that the 5, 10, and 15,000 gives a better choice for all those with any land in any hamlet with a potential for growth. Mr. Chairman, may I please ask Kristi Yearwood and Mike to come forward to enlighten us a little further?
Good evening, Commissioners. I don't have a lot to add. I think that Commissioners Brockman and Hayes did an excellent job of kind of summarizing the amendment that is before you tonight. I'll just say that when you all asked us to revisit this issue, we took that charge very, very seriously. And as, as the Commissioners pointed out, we held two public meetings to try to get as much information from the community as we could in terms of what they'd like to see. And really, the, the, the input was very mixed. And what I mean by that is that there were a nearly identical number of people who expressed the opinion that buildings should be less than 5,000 square feet, as there were people expressing the opinion that they should be larger than 25,000 square feet. And so when we met with the zoning ordinance update steering committee, the objective and the intention was to craft an amendment that strikes the proper balance between those differing points of view, while at the same time continuing to adhere to sound planning principles and the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So, so that was kind of the history and the intention behind this amendment. We do feel like that this amendment does that. And it had, and as has been mentioned, the amendment was unanimously recommended by the zoning ordinance update steering committee and unanimously recommended by the planning
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to briefly remind you of the procedure involved in this because it has been since May, since we did this. When the new zoning ordinance was adopted in May, the effective date is January 1. And so we wanted to try and bring any amendments back to you so that it would be rolled in before the zoning ordinance was effective. So we have this one this evening and then you're going to see a couple more cleanup things next month, assuming it all goes as planned at the next planning commission meeting. With that in mind, as you know, when, before amendments to the zoning ordinance come here, they have to go to the planning commission and the planning commission has to either recommend it or not, but regardless, they have to see it. So if you amend, just a reminder, the terms of this resolution this evening, then I would, if an amendment is approved, motion to amend, then I would stop you there because it would go back to the planning commission at either its November or December meeting and then we would have to come back here in January with whatever you all decide. So we don't, since we don't do these zoning things too terribly often, I just wanted to remind you of that process. So, this can be heard as it is tonight, but if it's amended on the floor here, then a vote can't be taken on the amendment. The amendment can be voted on, but not as approvable in the resolution. It would have to go back for a review by the planning commission, re-advertised and have the double public hearing again. So, if you have any procedural questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but as far as the questions on the planning piece, I'm going to leave that to Mike.
Kristi, if you'll stand by.
Yes, sir.
We'll be around.
If the amendment tonight is voted down, does it revert back to the original resolution that was passed in May, or do we go back to the way it was before the resolution or the ordinance was passed on, on May 14?
Well, the zoning ordinance as a whole was approved in May, which had the 5,000 square foot limitation. So if this amendment doesn't pass this evening, then that would be what the effective zoning provision would be come January 1.
So we'll say if, if this one is, is voted down, it would remain at 5,000 rather than the amendment as it is here?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Yes. While you're up there, my question is, when a hamlet becomes a village, okay? And the reason I ask that question is, from 1988, we had 18 communities, country crossroads. We carved out four communities from that 18 and we made them villages.
Yes, sir.
Now, each one of those villages now has designed its own plans, to call it something better than that, as to what they would like to see in their individual communities. Leapers Fork is different than College Grove. And it's, it's going to be that way to all the villages. So now when a hamlet becomes a village, does it adopt, how do they handle that as far as, do they adopt one of the existing ones, or do we have to go through that process again?
That's an excellent question. And, and part of this amendment actually addresses the transition, or at least the potential transition of these hamlets to villages. And acknowledges that with, with changing conditions in the future and increased demand in the future, there may be a need. It may be very appropriate to, to do that kind of rezoning at some point. The way that would work mechanically is that initially, a rezoning would be made from the current hamlet district to the generic village district that is already a part of the new zoning ordinance. And then once that has taken place, we would start a process of working with the community to develop a special area plan just for that one area, based on the, the community's input. And then once that plan is adopted, we would use that plan and that vision as the basis for developing a more tailored set of development standards for that newly created village, just like we have done so far, as you mentioned, for Leapers Fork and College Grove.
Right.
Anything to follow up?
Sure. On, of the 18 that were original, we selected those four. And what we're going to, what we're planning to do tonight is to apply a set of zoning regulations to all 14 of those different hamlets, if they come to that. I spent better part today, excuse me, going on the report that came out, then listed all the hamlets and what have you. And as I went through different maps to try and find some of these locations.
Right.
Your county map that you print out, the huge one.
Yes.
It only include hamlets on it. But I went to your online site and I have to click to write things, I found the hamlets.
Right.
But, in the process of doing that, there are some of these 14 communities, there are hamlets. As I look at what a hamlet is, and I even went to the dictionary, what is a hamlet? After I thought through hamlet, I got down to the definition of a community hamlet.
Right.
And I found that there's only two states in the United States that have hamlets, New York and Oregon, which has kind of surprised me. This is defined as hamlets. And if you look at each one of those states, they are defined differently because they adopted them different ways. But as I look at these 14 locations, some of them are hamlets in my own definition, and I think most of us agree, some of them are not. I don't think all of these 14 should fall under the same regulation. And, and it, because you look at Bethesda, you look at Triune, Arrington, what have you, they're kind of on a cusp of being something else, other than what I would envision a hamlet being. And why that selection was made in that way, I don't know. Did we're going to apply it to all of these without looking at? When we had 18, you carved out four. Now we got 14, and I'm not mentioning how many we carve out, but I think some of them need to be carved out and looked at again. And, I don't know, of all the time that's gone into this, I hate to see we have to go through another public hearing again, if we have to go through another public hearing again, so be it. But something has to be done to carve out that 14 in a different little sector of some of those. And I'm not the, the one to name which ones are hamlets. In my own mind, I know what some of them are, but some of them I don't know. But Clovercroft is a hamlet. Triune is, or Arrington is not a hamlet. And Bethesda is not a hamlet, in my own mind, when you compare it to those. So, I think we need to back off a little bit and take a look at solving some of this problem because we've heard people tonight say that we've made a compromise, but I think, as was mentioned earlier, it's a false compromise with the 15. I think it should be to look at some of those other hamlets now that are at country crossroads. Maybe they may need to remain country crossroads. That's, and I haven't decided what to do about it yet, but I'm almost to the point of just deferring this thing for a month to look at that. I think it's worth it to those people that live in those communities, not because of the financial thing, because it's really not a hamlet. That's all I've got. I make a motion to defer.
I second.
Proper motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Brockman on the motion, on the amendment?
I would prefer that we don't defer because the whole process, it allows, Triune is a village, by the way, which is right next to Arrington. Okay, so that's not, that's not a hamlet. So, I'm just saying, if, if we sort of have a trigger, in other words, for those that you think are, you know, larger than a small hamlet, they have a trigger to be a village. In other words, that's the point. So that's built into this resolution. So it's not like we have to really reinvent the wheel for those communities that you think are on the cusp for more development commercially. So that's, I just think that's already, that's already hidden.
That transition from a village, from a, I'm sorry, I, Triune and Bill, and Arrington are so close together.
I know, you think they're just sort of the same, but...
No, no, they're not the same.
Okay.
Triune, Triune is the village.
Right.
Arrington.
Correct.
Is not a hamlet, in my own mind.
Okay.
When you have to, when I, the traffic count in one of these, to me, a hamlet is not a, a community where you have a traffic count over 10,000 cars a day streaming right through your hamlet. They're going to, Bethesda is going to be the same thing with 840, but I can't, I'm going to get my arms around calling, and I'll stay on Arrington, it's my district, but if it was, if it was in anybody else's district, I'd say the same thing. It's not a hamlet. When I have to wait, I have been on Wilson Pike and have to wait 15 minutes to get a, make a left turn onto 96. That's crazy. And this isn't a hamlet. That's not a hamlet. And that's why I'm saying that we need to examine some of these other locations that we've listed and lumped into the 14 and pull them out and take a look at them. And I think that's, they deserve it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
I think in the giving of two choices there, we did give the option of some of them, the hamlets that we're causing, calling an option for the village to be quicker than the others. It may be that if commercial growth does come... It may be that if commercial growth does come quicker to Arrington, which, there is some commercial growth now, but it's very limited in what is there. It may have more traffic, because it is a thoroughfare, but just the traffic by is not necessarily the only measure of it being a hamlet or it being a village. When it does qualify for a village, if the choose, choice is there, that is one to go back, and the community makes that choice. They sit down and they say what they want for it to be. We had many meetings in College Grove, meetings in Leapers Fork. It's designed by the residents, and that way, it becomes an exclusive community of their own. And that's, that's the whole point, in trying to make a choice of what, what it would be. Was the word "hamlet" the best choice? I don't know that it was, or it wasn't. It was one that was, that gave a feeling for it to be unique, for it to be quaint, and for it to keep the community character that we heard so much about. It does not limit the growth, other than by the size, and give you an option to go farther. But the, I don't, I don't see that, that it would help to defer. I think it would give us an opportunity to look at those two and say, do we need to reevaluate and make those two, if they do have development, to be village? Now, a couple of my calls did come from the Patinsville area, who did want small spaces. Wants historic area, that said they did not want their historic area compromised. So, I think, in being with the 840, there's a desire to look at 840 interchanges and see what, what might be there for growth. But I don't see that deferring is going to help the issue, other than delay this another month and not give us any more information than what we have. And we, it's something we can still tweak. Christie mentioned, we can come back at later dates and tweak it, but I, I'm going to oppose the deferring.
Commissioner Little on the amendment?
Yes. I represent the Arrington district also with Commissioner Green, and I agree that Arrington is not a hamlet. But one of the things I look at with deferral is, then we revert to the 5,000-square-foot limit, and that's what'll become the law on January 1. But I think this needs to be revisited. When we did this and got this amendment, we passed the zoning resolution as a whole on the prospect that we were going to revisit this issue. We have a compromise, but we still have a couple of problem areas. So, I think we do need to pass this amendment, so that we get to, at least we have increased it for 15,000 on certain areas, but I think we still have some areas that we need to visit and decide that they are not really hamlets in the true sense of the word. So, I would like to see us pass this amendment, but also add the directive to, let's go back, let's reexamine these bigger hamlets, and decide what we need to do with them. Because if we defer this, then we're locked in, 'cause there's no way we can get it redone by January 1 with all the, with all the public hearings we have to hold. So, I don't think that, and the Planning Department can say yes or no, if we defer today, I don't think we can get anything corrected by the time this goes into effect. So, therefore, I think we ought to go with the amendment, but I think we need to make the directive that we need to relook at two or three or four of these other hamlets and decide, do we need to change the villages? Do we need to come up with a third terminology for those areas? And I don't know the answer to that, but I really think that needs to be looked at.
You're making that in the form of an amendment? Oh, okay, all right. Commissioner Williams?
Call for the question.
Question's been called, proper motion, second. And so, we're voting on the amendment, which is to defer. Call for the question, that's correct. Okay. Call for the question. All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, well, we got one no. I don't remember how many we have here. So, we're gonna vote on the amendment, motion to defer, and if, you ready to vote, Linda? If you're in favor of deferring, push your yes button and confirm. Or if you're opposed? If you, if you're in favor of deferring, push your yes button and confirm. If you're not in favor of deferring, push your no button and confirm. We're voting on the motion to defer. If you're in favor of deferring, push your yes button and confirm. If you're opposed to deferring, push your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Seven yes, 14 no.
So, the motion to defer fails. Back to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Need to come up one more time. Back when we originally adopted this, I thought we adopted this thinking that it could come before us again, like these amendments with some suggestions. If we have concerns now, what avenue do we, as commissioners, have about property rights?
If you have concerns about...
About the whole, whole resolution.
Well, as far as this resolution, either, you can either vote it up or down, but if you vote it down, then, then I know that staff and I are gonna need some direction. We've heard some things tonight about some of these hamlets may need to be villages, or maybe there needs to be even a third designation, and we are all certainly happy to look at that. Well, I guess we're gonna need a little direction from the commission, and as to where you want us to start in that regard, and we can start looking at population numbers, there's lots of things, but it won't come back to you until January at the earliest, and that's...
And when it comes back to us in January, we can then approve it, or...
You can always, just like the zoning ordinance we've had since 1988, you can always amend it. I mean, you all could, you all could direct staff to rezone a village, and then we would draft it and bring it in. It would be here in January because of the public hearing notices, as Commissioner Little said. If this isn't approved, then it would be 5,000 square foot max in the hamlets. And so, that, based on this, that's before you tonight. And if it's voted down, or if it's approved, and there's still additional things that you want us to bring back, like I said, there's three that are going to the Planning Commission this week that you all will see next month, the Leapers Fork development standards for their village that we've worked on. And we, there's a correction on the zoning map. So, there's always the opportunity for the commission to make amendments to the zoning ordinance, as long as, it's just you have to allow the time for the public hearing notices to occur. And with you all not meeting in December, it would be January before something would come back.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna take a shot at this. I put it out there on the forum, and thank you, Commissioner Bether, for being the only one that replied. But I wanna thank the Planning Commission and the staff for trying so hard to please all the stakeholders. I know you guys have worked tirelessly. And I'm grateful for the amendment that, that was designed. I thought at first, it might be a solution to what we, was sort of the problems that were kind of percolating up. I think when you get close to, to cementing a plan like this, the real places of friction start to become evident. And I know for a while, we thought it was just the size of the, the maximum cap size of these, of these commercial structures, and that was a problem, and I appreciate the amendment that was made. I thought it was very brilliant, actually, that you tiered it and tied it to the amount of land that was owned by each, by each landowner. However, in attending the last Planning Commission meeting, the idea of maybe just eliminating the hamlet just started to be mentioned. And I think that after thinking about that and then hearing the people tonight, we still have a problem. I don't think this thing is, is done yet, and I think that land rights are at stake here. There's a, to me, it's a real simple fix. We're, we're sitting here discussing, we don't know what a hamlet is, and we don't. We're trying to, the people don't know, the, we don't know, and so, why have it? Let's just take the hamlet designation, the restrictions that apply to the CC landowners that were calling them hamlets, and eliminate that completely. The, the big boxes and the big developments can't happen without the infrastructure leading the way anyway, so let's leave the crossroads landowners the way they are now, or before we adopt this plan, without any of the 25 and the 10 and the 5. Leave them the way they are now. We can call them hamlets if we want to, but leave them the way they are, so they're not, we're not stripping their land rights. And then, when they become big enough, leave the village, the village description in there. When they become big enough, when infrastructure leads to that point, they get a custom plan. I think it's really unfair that we give the villages the sort of custom treatment, and we, we then take a one-size-fits-all and blanket it over these hamlets. And we're hearing tonight, we've got hamlets that, that the people at the, at the meeting, they put dots on there, they wanted smaller than 5,000, but then we've got areas that are next to 840 that have, that are really being devalued. And I think that we have to, we have to consider that. So, I'd like to make a motion and put this to a vote, to leave the crossroads property the way they are without any of the, the new ordinance restrictions.
Proper motion, second. Christie, you wanna address that?
I do, and I guess what, part of my job, and Mike is gonna probably have to step in here, too, is just to advise you again of the procedure. When the new zoning ordinance was drafted and adopted, the CC zone no longer exists, okay? It's a different zoning schematic in how you determine what buildings can go on what size, and the setbacks, and the landscaping, and all of that. It's, it's a different schematic than the zoning ordinance we have in place. So, as far as eliminating the hamlet and just picking back up the CC, it's not as easy as it sounds. And, and I'm not saying that to, to say, "Don't do it." I'm telling you that it's gonna take more than just that. The, the CC zone, again, no longer exists. These are hamlet zones now, and the hamlet is defined by the zoning ordinance that's adopted. If you want us to go back and look at how the CC zone dealt with the size of buildings, how it was dealt with in the CC, then that's something that we can look at doing in the hamlets. But as far as saying, "Well, we're not gonna zone those hamlet and just go back to making them CC," it, it won't, it won't work in the current, in the structure, the way the zoning ordinance is set up. And so, if, if the characteristics of the CC are what you're looking for, then that's something that we could possibly look at, and I'm gonna let Mike maybe fill in for me.
Well, I think, I think that was a, a good answer. The, the chief difference between the old CC district and the new hamlet district is that the hamlet district puts a cap on the maximum building size for individual commercial and industrial buildings. And so, I think, I think we would, if, if that is the wish of this commission, I think the way we would deal with that is that if, if you all would, if, if that is your, your wish, then I believe Ms. Ransome indicated that, that we would have to go back to the Planning Commission to, to relay that to them, and have a public hearing regarding that amendment, and then, following their recommendation, bring it back to you, but it would be after January.
That's what my motion is asking.
Would you restate your motion again, Mr. Danner? Kathy, would you restate your motion?
I don't know how to make it, I don't know how to make it more clear, but the motion would be to let the current CC, no, the now hamlets revert back to their CC rules, standards.
And I assume that you, you mean with respect to what size buildings are allowed now versus what they used to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got a proper motion, the second. Just for my clarification, if, if this passes, then we will revert back to the maximum they can build is 5,000 square feet, up until something else is adopted.
That's correct.
You can't make it revert prior to what is in place, which is what you're trying to do. What's in place from May is 5,000 square feet. If you remove the hamlet, it only goes back to May, it doesn't go back prior to that. And if you want it to go back prior to that, you make the motion for the amendment, but that's a new amendment that then has to go to the Planning Commission before it can come here. In the interim, you're gonna be stuck with 5,000 square feet.
So, I can make an amendment to the current zoning, a different amendment than the one we're, that's before us tonight. I can make a motion for a new amendment to revert their rights.
You can amend, you can amend this, like, for instance, you want to amend this resolution to change the numbers. You can do that, but if that amendment to this resolution is approved by the commission, then that will go back to the Planning Commission. If you are also saying to the, to the staff that you want the staff to go back and draft the hamlet provisions to address the building sizes as they were when they were CCs.
Yes.
We can also do that. That would have to come in the form of a new resolution with a new attachment with the, how it would actually be worded in the zoning ordinance. That would go to the Planning Commission, and then it would come back here, January at the earliest, if we really work very hard to get it drafted.
Okay, well, then you can, so we have to pass the amendment that we have in front of us, or not?
And then you would have to file a new resolution.
And then I would file a new resolution as quickly as our attorneys could write it, and then we would, it would come before us, it couldn't come before us in November?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
But it could come before us in January. What are the ramifications for not, for the, what's the magic of January?
That was the effective date of the zoning ordinance that the commission approved when we adopted it in May.
Okay, so nothing happens, we don't lose any state money, there's no reason we couldn't make it February?
The entire zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, you would have to go back, and I, now Jeff's gonna have to address this, but you're gonna have to go back and undo your previous resolution that was approved in May, because that was a provision of that resolution. So, that would be a Jeff question on that procedure, but that effective date was incorporated in that resolution when the zoning ordinance was approved. So, that, that resolution would have to be revisited in order to amend that effective date. Yes?
Correct. And you haven't had notice of that on the agenda as to this. It would be different from the caption and the content of this bill, so you'd have to file that resolution for the November meeting.
Okay.
It clears mud?
To change the effective date. She takes, filed the resolution.
Commissioner Little, we're back on the main resolution.
Oh, we're on her, well...
Has she withdrawn her amendment?
You're gonna withdraw yours, I'm sorry.
I, I don't have a choice. I'm hearing, I can't make that motion, I can't reverse, I can't give these people what they're asking for, I can't give them their, their previous rights. Their rights have apparently already been baked, as I was worried when we adopted this in May, that that was gonna be the case. It's done. So, now to make it, to try to give their rights back, we've, I've gotta write a resolution and try to get it in by January, and try to undo what's been done. That's what I'm understanding?
I think, I think they tried.
Okay, so I don't have a choice.
As I attended the meeting, and I watched, I mean, and looked at the report that they sent out, I go back to when we did the plan. We have some different areas, that's what's been talked about, is the cookie cutter approach. We have some different areas of the county that see things differently. I support this amendment, because it makes some changes and a compromise, but I don't think we're done there. I think we have to go back now and look at some individual hamlets, and that's what I'd like to ask the Planning Commission to do. Let's look at the hamlets. We've got, the last dot exercise they did showed clearly there's some divergence of opinions in different areas. And some of the people are happy with what we've done, some aren't. So, we need to continue to move forward. I don't think we need to go back. The only way we can do what Ms. Danner would like to do is to repeal the whole ordinance. Then we have to start over again. I just don't think that's a good option. But I think we still need to move forward and make these tweaks and make these changes. We've got, and we still have, can do that. Can it be done by January 1? No. But I don't know of any looming developments that makes that, making that deadline that important. But there are some areas that I think we have to visit and still make some further changes to. And that's what I'd like to ask the commission to do. We need to look at these hamlets, especially on the eastern side of the county, and whether, and again, I don't know the answer. Is it a third designation somewhere between a hamlet and a village, or is it going to... Or is it going ahead and taking them to village? I don't know. I haven't stated it that far. But I think we need to adopt this amendment, and that makes the compromise. And then we need to direct the planning commission to move forward, and let's look at some of these hamlets, and decide that's got, needs to be changed.
Joe Horn, could you come up and comment on that?
Good evening. I want to, I want to point out one thing for fairness of this whole circumstance. In 1988, when we adopted the ordinance that we were under, a year, two years after that, there was something in the range of 200 text amendments. It was as simple as that, because you don't catch everything first time. There'll be these kind of issues. There are other issues we haven't contemplated right now. The issue we have right now is we have to land in order to know where we're going to move the next step. And that's all, that's all I would say, and that's the reason why I think it's pretty important to go on, get this amendment handled, and move on to the next problem, because, you know, we have, you know, we have been, we have, and we are willing to go back and do anything that this, this body wants. But again, until you land, it's really hard to say what can happen next.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, I'm a little confused if, if, I start relying on all the people living in the county for how they're going to vote on this particular issue. And if I understand this correctly, in order for like a Krogers or a Walmart to go into somewhere in the county, they have to be at least a village? Or what, you know, is that, is that, is that one of the criteria? I know we've got 15,000 max on the hamlets. Who can answer that question for me? Can a, can a village authorize a Krogers, or a Walmart, or a Target to come into their community?
They could. Following the special area of plan process that we talked about. They, they could. There are not any villages that are currently, that, that process has already taken place that have for themselves established a building size that big.
Okay.
But it's, 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 it's possible that, following that process, a village could determine that that's what they want to see, and then, and then implement tailored standards to achieve that. There may be some issues with, with infrastructure, particularly sewer, but it is possible for that to happen.
Okay. Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It, so doesn't this really rely back to the communities to come on, come up to be a village so they can have their own special plan to themselves? And the hamlets are hamlets until they make that, the community makes that decision?
That's the way it's proposed. We have a number of hamlets, and, and we're recommending this amendment that increases the size of the buildings that are allowed in those hamlets up to a point. But there is a mechanism by which the, the hamlets could request a rezoning to a village, at which point that special area plan process would take place, and then new standards would be developed for that community based on their preferences.
Right, so, so these individuals that really don't like this, they could go back and say, "Hey, we need to become a village so we can get our own plan."
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And there's no population restrictions on going to a village, or?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brockman?
I was just going to reiterate that there's a, there are triggers in this, and so I really think we need to make this amendment, approve it tonight, get the whole zoning amendment approved, and then, if there are, there are these two possible circumstances where they just feel like they're, they're not getting enough breathing room in terms of development size, then we, when, then that's allowed. I really don't see this as a taking away property rights. I see this as the community getting the opportunity to establish, you know, what's appropriate, you know, in Kingfield versus Benning Chestnut. This is, we, we've really done that. We, this really is based on sound, you know, conversations and input from the community. So I'm not saying it's perfect, but I do think we need to move forward with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
Yeah, I've got a question and then a possible request. Commissioner Danner, did you withdraw your amendment to the resolution?
Amendment, it was impossible to make.
You made an amendment and it got seconded. Is that withdrawn now?
Again, it was impossible to make. It never made it to the floor, because it wasn't impossible to make that amendment.
It's on the board now, I think.
But we can't vote.
You offered an amendment, it was seconded. Has that been withdrawn? That's all I need to know.
I didn't willingly withdraw it. But my understanding is that it was impossible to vote on, so it has been withdrawn by default.
So it's withdrawn, okay. I move, call for the question.
Proper motion and second. All in favor?
This one.
All in favor of calling a question, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Can I show hands? Three, okay. Question's been called. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 10124, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. As presented, no amendments. If anyone would like to change their vote, do so at this time. Everyone voted? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nineteen yes, one no, and one abstained.
Resolution passes. Resolution 10121. Okay, we'll, we'll take about a 10-minute break. All right. Call the meeting back to order. Next resolution I have is Resolution 10121, Resolution appropriating in the 2012-2013 general purpose school budget, $25,000, additional federal funds for expenditures for the board's adult education program. Commissioner Langston, Mr. Barnwell II. School Board, 12, 4, 0 against. Education Committee?
7, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Ah, yes, sir, this is a state and federal grant money that's going to the, support the board in its efforts with the adult education program.
All right.
I request the support.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 10121, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no but, button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Commissioner Green, you need to confirm. All right, record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Resolution passes. Resolution 10122, Resolution appropriating a total of $2,690,690 in the general purpose school fund to adjust for the state increase for educational, educator salaries. Commissioner Langston, Commissioner Barnwell II. School Board, 12, yes, 0, no. Education Committee?
7, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Commissioner Hancock?
If you'll remember back, the state came forward with an additional raise for the teachers deep into the budget process, and this gets the revenue to do that with.
All right, any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 10122, whoops, wait a minute, Commissioner Ford?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question at the Education Committee that I'm not sure I got a complete answer on, and so I'd like to see if I could get an answer from Dr. Looney. In the budget process, we were told that there were, the state was going to contribute 2.5% towards the teacher's salaries, and then we were, based upon that, we were able to find the 2.5% for the rest of the staff. Well, it appears that the state's come up a little bit short, and we're asked to contribute almost half a million dollars of county money, county school money towards this, and I'd just like to understand that disparity.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you for your question. I'll be glad to try to address it the best I can. As you know, and Ms. Holman, you may have the exact number of teachers for me, I don't know. Do you, how many locally funded teachers we have? 300? 250? We have 200, approximately 250 locally funded teachers beyond the BEP formula, and so portion of this, this adjustment is to reflect the pay rates for those people that fall outside of the BEP. In addition to that, though, we are, we don't get 100% BEP funding for the teachers that we get, we only get a percentage of it. So this is our cost share portion of that.
Okay, so in general, if I think of that, we have more teachers than the BEP allows, and we pay them more?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Williams? No, okay, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 10122, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 10123, Resolution appropriating funds for additional land in Nolansville area. Commissioner Hancock?
I'm going to defer to the chairman of the Education Committee, I think.
Okay, proper motion, the second.
Second.
Commissioner Langston, the second. School Board, 12, yes, 0, no. Education?
7, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0, as amended.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This was amount of money that we've talked about previously to buy the land and for the Nolansville or Northeast School Complex, and the school board is asking that we go on and fund the entire $1 million, but there may be an amendment to that.
Commissioner Williams, you want to make that amendment?
I do have an amendment, and it's not the, it's not really the amendment that's shown here. Dr. Looney, would you come forward, please? We discussed this with, give, give the commission a little bit of history. Back in June of this year, we approved $250,000 in four increments over the next four years to make that 11, that, that million dollars. Discussing this with Dr. Looney and Mr. Anderson, Mayor Anderson, it's my understanding that, quote, "This year we have already approved $250,000." So really, all they need is additional $152,000 to make a total of 402,428 instead of a million dollars. They've already got the two, they've already got the $250,000, they just need another Now, my question to you is, Jeff, with this resolution written as it is, how is the best way to amend that?
And I'm trying to find out exactly what the intent of it was, because I was under the impression from this resolution that they would spend the entire million dollars this year.
They just, they just need to go ahead and close on it. Am I correct, Dr. Looney?
Yes, sir, if I could address the commission with the chairman's permission. My understanding is two things need to happen. The first thing that I believe would, would need to happen for, for the school district to close on all 100 acres, which is our desire at this point in time, is for the county commission to rescind the portion of the approval process that you approved, and you should have an amendment to that effect. And what that essentially does is it rescinds the portion that, that speaks to how we're going to allocate the funding for the purchase of the additional 2,500 acres. The original directive from you was that we were going to set aside $250,000 for each year, each of four years. We have already set aside the $250,000 for the current year. So that leaves three more $250,000 increments sometime in the future. If you decide to rescind that, which is what my request is, and you have an amendment to that effect, then I would ask that you, that you approve $402,427.92 for the additional 25 acres. We would then take that 402,000, which is 152,000 additional dollars out of the school system's general purpose fund, combined with leftover construction dollars that we have from closing out Grassland Middle School and two other projects, so we could then have an entire million dollars to close on the 25 additional acres. So I believe there are two things that need to happen. The first one is rescinding the original resolution, and then we're requesting your approval of what the Budget Committee has already approved. The Education Committee approved this. However, we since the Education Committee met, closed out the Grassland Middle School project, and saved 175,000 additional dollars that we could fund portion of that land with. So we just need Resolution 1012 dot 3 approved in the same manner that the Budget Committee approved it, which is a total of school fund balance proceeds of 402,427.92.
And, and the capital unencumbered balance increasing to 597?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then you would add, further be resolved, which I believe is at your desk, which would rescind 66, or 61212. I think you have to do them separately.
Just hang on. Then I, my first amendment would be that we move to amend the resolution that we approved at 61212 concerning the intent to fund the additional $1 million in four increments of 250,000 each, and move that, that resolution be rescinded.
Proper motion, Mr. Langston II. All in favor, well, any discussion on that amendment? You have that loaded. Commissioner Barnwell, did you want to speak to that amendment, or?
No.
Oh, okay, all right. I see no discussion, so we're, is that what you, Commissioner Williams, is that on the monitor up there?
Right.
Okay. If you're in favor of the, the amendment that's loaded on the board, if you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone? Commissioner Cook? Commissioner Heston? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
The amendment passes. Commissioner Williams, you want to make another amendment?
The second amendment, and Dr. Looney, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it reads, it says it reads, "Increase the capital unencumbered balance by 175,000 for a new total of 597,572.08. Decrease the general purpose school fund balance by 175,000 for a new total of 402,427.92."
That's correct, sir, that is our request.
That's my motion.
Proper motion, Mr. Bane II. Any discussion on the motion?
I did not hear that word.
Okay, we'll give you a minute, or two.
Yes.
Tell me when you're ready.
Well, I'm going to have to, just a second.
Well, I'm going to have to, just a second. I'm going to have to, um, I'm going to have to, um, I'm going to have to, um, I'm going to have to.
If you're in favor of the amendment, uh, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. So, now, we're back to the main resolution, ten twelve-three, as amended. Uh, any discussion on that? You ready, Linda? All in favor of Resolution ten twelve-three, as amended, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten twelve-five. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an option and sales agreement for the purchase of real property for parks and recreation purposes in appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve thirteen county general fund recreational privilege tax and related transfers to the capital projects fund by two hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the motion. Commissioner Herbert, the second. Uh, explanation, let's see, Committee Report, Property Committee?
Five-four, zero, yes.
Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Herbert? Or Hayes?
I can't even tell you exactly how many years we have been looking and known that we needed property out in the south end of the county to further our athletic and our recreational purposes. Uh, when Heritage School, uh, formed their park, there was room for fifty to sixty, uh, participants in the athletic fields. Today, they have six hundred and fifty to seven hundred kids who are attempting to play. They're using space and land in other areas. So, this look and this quest has been going on for some time. It was put on hold, uh, by our, uh, Director and Mayor when things were very difficult and we were still looking. But personally, I know that there were many times that the land that we looked at would be somewhere like, uh, low twenty thousand an acre, thirty thousand, forty, fifty thousand an acre. And it was impossible for us to, to find the size acreage that we need for a regional area. This area has been found. It's off of Harpers School Road, and the beauty of it is it's accessible to so many areas in the county. It's approximately seventy-five acres. It is undeveloped. Uh, it is accessible to the eight forty, which makes it accessible, uh, for tournament play and all from Fairview to Peytonsville to Franklin and to Brentwood and all those areas. Probably the least, uh, would be the Grassland area, but, but it's still accessible. Uh, it's right there as you come off of eight forty, very near there. It's, uh, we have Quikes Lane right down the road. We have Thompson Station Road, uh, Bethesda Lane, uh, Bethesda Road on down to Duplex. It's right in the heart of all the active, uh, place and active areas. I think that it is something that we have needed for so long to give activities for, for the boys and girls that are there, and it gives us room to not only have an active field play, but to have passive park. There's an old rock quarry there that could be used for rock climbing, and even in the future, down the road, probably an amphitheater. So, there's very, uh, a lot of potential there. It is something that, um, Director Hood says that will not be developed anytime soon, but he has the money available now with the need of only a hundred and twelve thousand dollars because they're going to do the due diligence and see if the land is perccable, if it's usable. And if not, we're under no obligation to, uh, to use it. Um, at appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for Mr. Hood to come, or, or the Mayor, whomever, to address this particularly because it, it does have a beautiful thought that if it checks out to be what we think, it will be a, a buy of a lifetime. If not, we're under no obligation.
All right. Mr. Hood, you will, per her request?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have been looking a long time for property, and hopefully found something that's going to take care of the sound of the county.
For quite some time to come. The, uh, beauty of this is that when we put the hold on a lot of projects, we had a land, money in land account. And in doing that, then we've been able to come up with nine hundred and eighteen thousand. The hundred and twelve thousand, we need to make the million thirty, uh, for the purchase price. Then, we needed the hundred, plus another hundred thousand to do the due diligence. Um, and that due diligence will include, as you know, with the, where the property's located, the traffic study. Uh, and the Mayor is very concerned about this, and we will make sure that that takes place, and that will be the first thing that we do before we spend any money on the due diligence. We'll do the traffic study first, and then when, if that comes back favorable with the Mayor's permission, then I'll move forward with the due diligence, and then, obviously, uh, move toward the purchasing of the property if everything checks out. But we've got a long process ahead of us, um, and we're ready to get that going, and hopefully, your support for this because this is the kind of thing, I think, when we look back in a couple of years or, or longer, and be happy that we own the property when we start the development of it because we do not have soccer fields or a lot of baseball fields or things in the south end of the county, and as you know, it's one of the fastest-growing parts. Um, and we've also talked to Thompson Station, uh, already, since it's in their city limits, and they've been very favorable with the idea of doing this, and, uh, I, I think this is a good purchase for the county. I'll certainly entertain any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Hood. Stand, stand by. Uh, Commissioner Danner?
I got one, Doug.
Okay.
Um, you and I have had this conversation before, and I, um, have no problem with the green grassy fields and, and, um, ballparks, but I just have to ask you for the record, if, if this goes through, do you intend to put a health and fitness center down there?
No.
All right.
Not on that park.
All right.
Uh, we have one down there at Longview.
Make it sure.
Uh, any other, uh, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yeah, Doug, do, do we know who actually owns this property?
Yes, sir.
Who is it?
Fellowship, uh, Fellowship Limited, Fellowship LLC.
Who are they?
Uh, we, it, excuse me? It, it, uh, was originally, the way I understand, was originally bought for church property, and that did not take place. And there, I believe there are eight or ten people that are involved in this that hold the note, when they do have a representative and an attorney.
Okay.
And we have somebody representing us on the realty side as well as, and please let me comment, or compliment Bobby, he's been a wonderful help to me in getting this document put together. So, we, yes, sir, we do know who owns it, and we, and it is for sale.
Okay. Uh, follow, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Uh, the, the diagram you showed in the budget meeting, uh, showed there was a, this, this property sort of reminds me of our first attempt to buy land for the rec center in Spring, or in Spring Hill. There appears to be a, like a quarry lake on this property.
There is.
Isn't that, isn't that a mega lawsuit waiting to happen that we, somebody gets hurt or drowns in that, in that lake? Cause they're not shallow.
Uh, this one is very, fairly shallow, and it's something that we would have to address because we feel it would add to the park in a passive way where you'd be able to walk. The quarry goes down and has our, obviously been taken out, all the rock. Um, and, sir, everything we do is a question of liability.
Right.
I mean, everything. So, I, I, I guess that the only way I know to answer that, is there a possibility of that? Yes. Do, you know, we're going to build trails someday at Binning Chestnut with, uh, for bikes and, uh, you know, all kinds of things that we do could cause someone to think that they could certainly sue us, but I, I can't look at it like I'm looking at it, but I think we can protect the residents by doing safe things in a park that has a variety of things in it. So, I, I guess to answer your question probably would be, yes, it could happen, but I don't think in parks and recreation, we look at it like that. I hope it answered your question, but it is, it's, it's a different piece of property, Commissioner. I will agree with that.
Would you, would you look at draining that lake?
Uh, I would, as a matter of fact, because I, you know, we really got some ideas about, you know, rock climbing, amphitheater, walking trails, um, picnic areas, because it's really a beautiful piece, and there's a lot of things we can do. Um, and I think we'd be, we've already even talked about some possible fencing that would have to happen up on the left, the top level of the quarry, where we would do slant fences where you can see through it, and then the fence goes this way so you can't climb it if there's a danger there. I mean, we're going to do everything safety-wise to keep people from hanging, you know, doing that, but it's, again, every, everything we do is, has something to do with some kind of safety mechanism.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brockman?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Doug. Uh, I think it is an unusual piece of property in that sense. Uh, however, I think, you know, the, the creative side of the brain hopefully can come up with something that can be exciting and creative for young people and adults, uh, to enjoy, uh, but not be, not be the liability that it would be just as it is now. So, I think they're certainly, I hope, will investigate that with the right kind of architectural engineers in mind that could give us that kind of input. The second thing I was going to mention, you mentioned Thompson Station because it's within their boundary, and I had said, he had said, obviously, the leadership supports it and the community supports it, but I had said all along how important it was for them to financially support it in the future, and when that time comes, I think there's definitely support for that as well. So, I think that's-
Yes, ma'am. I have, I've been indicated that. I spoke with Greg Langley, as I, as you all know, the city administrator in Thompson Station, to reiterate again to make sure that they were behind this, and he said a hundred percent. So, that's the only voice I have to go on right now.
Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Hood, I know that there was, uh, some hopes of having some discussions with the property owners with the adjacent property.
Yes, sir.
Has there been any prog, uh, progress made with that?
We're trying to get a meeting set up with them. I asked Mr. Langley about that again tonight, and he's still in the process of doing that. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Bain?
Call the question.
Question's been called. Is there a second? Commissioner Williams, the second. All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the question's been called. So, we're ready to vote? Resolution ten twelve-five. If you're in favor of Resolution ten twelve-five, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes and one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten twelve-eight. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve thirteen animal control budget by five thousand nine hundred dollars. Revenues to come from an anon, anonymous donation for the purchase and installation of a fence at the Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption Center. Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Bethard, the second. Uh, Public Health Committee?
Five yes, zero no.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five-four, zero.
Against.
Uh, explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
It's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, we have wonderful group of volunteers who help us by coming and walking the animals on a day-to-day basis, and the area of walking around sometimes is somewhat limited, and to put them in our bark park out there, uh, it sometimes is full with our normal residents that are there walking their dogs. So, there was this anonymous donor who wanted to, um, have a walking area for our shelter animals for the volunteers to walk, and were willing to come forth with the, the five thousand nine hundred dollars that was necessary to build that, uh, area. So, uh, with that being given, we very much would like your approval to put it in the account and bring it back out to make that walking area.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution ten twelve-eight, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten twelve-nine. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve thirteen Parks and Rec budget by twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Move for approval? Commissioner Davis?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Little, the second. Uh, Parks and Rec Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
Donation to Parks and Rec to support Haunted Trails of Horror hayride. I encourage your support and participation.
Uh, no comment. Okay. Uh, any discussion? Ready to vote? Resolution ten twelve-nine. If you're in favor, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Me. Now.
Thank you.
Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten twelve-ten. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve thirteen Parks and Rec budget by twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Little, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Uh, Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
It's a donation to Parks and Rec Department for umpires and referees.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution ten twelve-ten, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Mr. Barnwell? There we go. Uh, anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten twelve-twelve. Resolution amending the two thousand twelve thirteen Highway Department budget and appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars for curbing in Hillsborough Acres. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Highway Commission?
Five-four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is, uh, doing a curb of a road, and the curb, curbing of roads is somewhat out of the norm for what the Highway Department usually does, so they're going to have to have it done. It's at Hillsborough Acres, and the cost will be about fifty thousand dollars. That area's being resurfaced, and it'll also help in some of the water, a little bit with some of the water up there.
All right. Thank you.
They do put that out for bid, Mr. Chairman. We asked that at the Budget Committee.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution ten twelve-twelve, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution twel, ten twelve-thirteen. Resolution amending the two thousand twelve thirteen General Sessions DUI Court budget by fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-two dollars, sixty cents. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five-four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, Commissioners, this is a grant that's coming down and, uh, for the drug court. Uh, it's coming from the state, I believe, and, uh, it'll be used to try to keep offenders from being repeat offenders in, uh, contracts with other government, government agencies and General Sessions DUI Court. Revenue's come from the state.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution ten twelve-thirteen, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten twelve-fifteen. A resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more emissions of county district school refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding rural school bonds, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, in interest on the bonds.
Uh-[1793.92]
Move for approval?
Commissioner Williams, motion? Mr. Little, the second?
Mr. Chairman, this is the, one of the bond issues that Ms. Graham addressed when she was at the podium to start with. There does need to be a correction made on the fourth line down where it says general obligation bonds. That should read rural school bonds.
Okay. Do we need to have a vote?
Do what? Yeah, replace general obligation bond with rural school bond.
It's just a typo.
Right.
Attorney says we don't need to vote on that. Uh, all right. Any discussion on resolution ten, twelve, fifteen? I see none. You're ready to vote? Resolution ten, twelve, fifteen. If you're in favor, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution twelve, sixteen. A resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more emissions of general obligation refunding bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding general obligation indebtedness, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal or of premium, if any, in interest on the bonds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Uh, what committees? Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
All right. Explanation Commissioner Williams?
This is, again, this is the bond issuance that Ms. Graham and, um, council addressed earlier in the meeting.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor... Oh, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, uh, this is for the mayor. What was the total net amount of savings that this was going to... We had several numbers kicked around up there, Mr. Mayor, and I was wondering what that total savings amount was gonna be for the county.
Grand total of, of, um, both of them's about four to four and a half million.
Four to four and a half million. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? I see none. Ready, vote? Resolution ten, twelve, sixteen. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Late file resolution ten, twelve, seventeen. Resolution authorizing the county to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve, thirteen Sheriff's Department budget by seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Revenue is to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. Dwight Jones, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this, uh, the Sheriff's Department put in for this grant and was, was fortunate enough to receive it. And it'll be used for training purposes to help our officers, uh, make a good case against, uh, these DUI, uh, offenders and to develop good techniques for law enforcement, testing, and training to reduce backlog in the DUI cases. Also include a youth alcohol program designed to prevent the purchase and use of alcohol and DUI-related crashes. I request your support.
Any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? Resol- late file resolution ten, twelve, seventeen. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten, twelve, eighteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve, thirteen Sheriff's Office budget by four thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars, forty-two cents. Revenue is to come from grant funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Danner, second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, this is very much the same. The Sheriff's Department, uh, applied for a grant and received thirty-two thousand, uh, for said purposes to be spent by the SROs and the ARA technology. Uh, the total expenditures will be forty-eight hundred and forty-three ninety-four and a hundred and nineteen dollars. And the revenues are coming from ARA and SRO technologies, forty-nine, sixty-three, forty-two.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution ten, twelve, eighteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Greg, you want to get out? All right. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Late file resolution ten, twelve, nineteen. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve, thirteen County Clerk's budget by ten thousand dollars. Revenue is to come from reserve account. Uh, Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Second.
Bud, Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Uh, Explanation Commissioner Green?
Yeah, it's the county clerk's office is gonna purchase some computer and printing equipment from funds derived from the filing fees.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of late file resolution ten, twelve, nineteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes. Resolution passes. Resolution ten, twelve, seven. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to accept improved real property and to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Williamson County Board of Education concerning the transfer, maintenance, and use of the Pinewood School property. Uh, who said, who said? Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Ricky Jones, the second. Uh, Property Committee?
Property Committee, uh, seven, four, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation Commissioner Williams?
This involves the, uh, Pinewood School that, uh, that no longer operating in the school. There are two requirements to do what they're trying to do out there. The first one is that the county intends to construct a, uh, rural fire hall, fire hall on the property which satisfies the public purpose requirement. And the parties have agreed that the school board will retain the use of the school facilities, including the gymnasium, for the term of the interlocal lease agreement.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of resolution ten, twelve, seven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten, twelve, eleven. Resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning Rule three dot ten. Uh, Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Little. Rules Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Uh, Explanation Commissioner Jones?
This is basically just replacing the word resolutions with the word items, just so we can pull and do things with the consent agenda legally.
Uh, any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? Resolution ten, twelve, eleven. If you're in favor, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution ten, twelve, fourteen. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Franklin for the mutual cooperation for use of the city's fiber optic network. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Uh, Property Committee?
Property, seven, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Uh, Explanation Commissioner Williams?
Explanatory. Um, there is an optic network already in place that the city has and are able, the Williamson County, to enter into a, an agreement with, with the, the city to use the same network.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? Resolution ten, twelve, fourteen. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes.
This concludes tonight's agenda. Uh, again, I want to remind you, next month, we're gonna meet on Tuesday, which I believe is November the thirteenth, uh, same, same time, same place, just on Tuesday. Uh, Commissioner Hancock?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got, uh, three machines holding Diane that don't respond to the first contact. Mine doesn't, uh, Commissioner has to, so we're having to push it two or three times. So just a little thing, but, uh, appreciate you. I know you take care of everything around here.
I think you're voting before I got ready.
Sometimes you all are pushing your button before Linda has actually logged you all in.
Sometime we're not, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, Commissioner Jones?
I guess that's the trick from Diane, and the treats came from Commissioner Cook.
That's right.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank Commissioner Cook, and, uh, thanks, thanks for the Halloween candy, and hope everybody has a great, safe Halloween. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.